...by Secretary Robert Reed, President Leeley, to the United States and Texas flag, the role of Officer Davis.
Keep your head. Heavenly Father, with our eyes to seek you first today in all ways surrendering our need to achieve understanding and be known, shift our perspective to seek your peace above all else. In every situation we ponder in our daily lives, Lord, let the Holy Spirit translate your commands. Give us renewed strength and godly courage to obey you without questioning. And forgive us for striving beyond our means and worrying and forcing results. We ask your guidance at all times, Lord, as we meet together as a body. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic forth which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justicethall. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to these Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Is David going?
President Barti.
Here.
Vice President Frank.
You.
Secretary Reed.
Here.
Trustee Ambrose.
Present.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Lofton.
Let the group reflect that we have a form. Mission statement. Our mission as the primary source of public education in the community is to meet the unique educational needs of our diverse population by providing a comprehensive quality education for the students of the Port Arthur Independent School District. Close meeting. Under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 and 551.074, the board will meet in closed meeting two. Consult with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation, including settlement offers and other legal matters in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rule of professional conduct of the State Board of Texas are clearly covered by attorney-client privilege. Consider personal recommendation Texas Government Code 551.074 as follows. Consider and if appropriate approve employment of teachers. Consider and if appropriate approve the employment of Chief of Police. Consider and if appropriate approve employment of elementary science supervisor. Consider and if appropriate approve employment of secondary ELAR supervisor. Consider and if appropriate approve employment of Director of MHS Kate. Consider and if appropriate rescind proposal nor renew of contract employees. We will go into closed session at 5:33 on the meeting at 7:00 P.M. We are excused.
Thank you, President Barti. We have a staff report and Mrs. James is going to start it off. Of course, we all know that H V three has passed and we are happy about that. It's a complex type deal with a lot of information, a lot of understanding. It does support teachers. It supports, it has support student outcomes. It supports everything, early literacy, finances as well. So tonight, we're going to go over a little bit of what House Bill Three is, what we know so far. We did do this for our staff. It won't take as long, but I did want you all to have some type of understanding of what we're learning. I will say that this House Bill is something that we have really talked about more than any other House Bill because there's so much. They put a lot, another ironic part of it all is they put a lot of emphasis on things that we have to do and then they compress the funds, the tax rate, which we get less money. So it's kind of funny, do this, do this, mandates, mandates, but then we have less. So when we talk about what we know, there is a basic allotment that the basic allotment has increased from $5,140 to $6,160 and that's a $1,020 increase in the basic allotment. Now, a basic allotment is the amount of money that we receive per student, per average student, okay? Per average student during an average, in an average district. And any year your basic allotment increases, the districts will be required to allocate 30% of their year-over-year budget increase to full-time employee compensation increases with 75% for teachers, counselors, nurses, meaning RNs, and librarians. So what they're saying, the monies that we were receiving, 30% is mandated to go to raises. That is new. In the past, we didn't have to do anything and you'll see in the budget report that Mrs. James is going to give in a minute that ours comes up to, our percentage comes up to about $800,000 that we have to put into raises. Now, you know that each year that we've given raises has been an up to one upward of $1.52 million. So we're good with that. We're good. But that is something that they changed 75%, teachers, counselors, nurses, and librarians. And the nurses is for, are RNs, not the LNs. And then the districts must report to the legislature by 12/1/2020 on the salary raise and raise increases. They didn't say anything about reporting to TEA. They just said we have to report to the legislators on how we've done that and that is what we will do. Now, 25%, it stated that we have to use 25% on other. They didn't really depict what other is at this time, but we understand it must be for auxiliary and so forth. Even though that is something a little different that we don't have to deal with, even though DOIs are still exempt from the minimum salary schedule, and when they say minimum salary schedule, Texas has a minimum salary schedule that you must pay teachers. Now, our minimum salary schedule for Texas is $33,600. So that means every district should start off at that amount. However, if you're a district of innovation, you do not have to. If your salary is lower, if you're a district of innovation, you do not have to meet that minimum salary schedule. However, if you do not, the district still has to pay TRS on the amount that they would need to, that they would have had, okay? So that's something that districts have to decide. There is a requirement that you do more for veteran teachers. Now, usually what we do is across the board, 3%, but now we have to look at veteran teachers five years and above and we have to do something separate for them. That means even if we have to give them a $50 increase, a $500 increase, but we have to differentiate for veteran teachers. There is also an option, option to also do a teacher incentive program that can significantly raise teacher salaries for those who designate, who are designated as a master, exemplary, or recognized teacher. So that means that if a teacher teaches in a low socioeconomic district, low scoring district, that teacher, if they're designated as a master teacher, can earn up to $32,000 extra. That is paid for by the state, not by the district, by the state, and it is a five-year designation, okay? And if that teacher goes to another district, that designation follows them, right? And as I said, it is a difference for master, exemplary, or recognized. It can start from $6,000 to $12,000, $9,000 to $18,000. Now, there is some flexibility that we're really not clear on for the $32,000. So when you start talking about all of the incentives that a teacher can earn, a teacher can make a six-figure salary now for the five, for five years. So that's interesting. But, yes.
I think certainly I understood what you said. In regards to the starting salaries, we, and we are a district, we have the latitude to start higher.
Okay. There's a minimum salary schedule for the state of Texas, okay? And the starting salary is $33,600. Now, we're above that by $15,000. We've paid $48,000. That's our starting salary at this time, so we're good. So, but a district who is not at that starting salary, if they're a district of innovation, if they choose not to meet it, they can. But they still have to pay the TRS, the teacher retirement.
So they're going to pay regardless to that district.
Exactly. Yes, they have to pay regardless. Yes, but as I said, we're good because we are above the minimum salary, about $15,000 and we're okay. We're good. District will increase the comp ed weight from .2 to one of the five values, .225 up to .275, based on the census tier and that is with state comp ed. And what we're going to do, we don't know the numbers, we don't, we don't know, but we're going to be very conservative. So we would start at .225 and that's where then you, there's something called true up at the end of the year and if it's more, that's good, we'll still get the money back. It also establishes a teacher mentorship program that funds stipends to mentors and other costs for mentoring teachers in their first two years. We are fortunate to have a strong mentorship program. As a matter of fact, Mrs. Pluses is out there now along with Ms. Dye and Ms. McKellen and everyone else that helps with the teacher mentor program. So we are working with our new teachers and there's money in it now for our mentors. Other funding, early education allotment for K-3 students who are educationally disadvantaged. We don't say economically disadvantaged anymore, educationally disadvantaged. And that's the same thing, eligible for free reduced lunch or limited English proficiency will fund at 0.1 per ADA. Also dyslexia funded at 0.1 and dual language at 0.05. So those are extra dollars that we will get for those designations. College and career military readiness expands CTE funding from nine to 12 grades to seven through, seven through 12. So that means we have to start looking at our middle schools to see where we can find classes that are CTE. That is a good thing, but there is a sequence of events, so that can hinder some in high school, but that's secondary, that's, that's, I forget what, along with the secondary principals, we'll look at that with the counselors, Mrs. Stady, and they'll find out if we have classes that are in middle school that can be counted as CTE. But as I said, there is a sequence, so we don't want to mess up our sequence, so that's more to come for that as well. Establishes a college career military readiness outcome bonus, the amounts and possible threshold percentages. So if we have an educationally disadvantaged student, that student, we can receive $5,000 each above the first 13% of the students. So students will receive that if we have students that graduate with those, with some distinctions, I should say, not educationally disadvantaged and special education. So for every special education student that receives one of these distinctions, we can get $2,000 for them. So that's a way to earn more money. Yes, that's a PMS issue that our IT department, yes, they will have to learn more about that and our coding will have to be on point along with everything else. Correct. Correct, correct. And that was, and that is, we must, we must have credible people that will be able to tend to that correctly. So that means working with schools and counselors. Reimburses districts to ensure students are given at least one college prep assessment such as the ACT, SAT, or TSI. So they will pay for a student to take one of those tests. So that's a good thing. Requires boards of trustees to develop a post-career, career military readiness plan and we'll work with Region Five on that policy as well. And the high school allotment has been repealed. It's not about, it has, it's gone away, but it's been reallocated. So we really have to make sure that that money is used correctly. So they'll be looking at that as well. Requires full-day pre-K for our four-year-olds and that's a good thing, you know, we had half-day pre-K. Now, it's a full-day four-year-old pre-K program, so that is good. And now it also tells us that requires districts to consider partnerships with high-quality providers prior to building or leasing new facilities for pre-K. We're, we're very fortunate to have new facilities, renovated facilities, so we have room for pre-K. But of course, we will go out and we will try to partner with other agencies such as the daycares, daycare centers. So we'll work with them and if there is a possibility that we can partner with them, we will, because you know, we want to partner with everyone. We're, we're just. Extended year incentives for districts that provide funding on a half-day basis for up to 30 additional instructional days above the 180. So that means we can extend our school year, 30 half-days, that is equivalent to 15 full-days and they'll pay for it and teachers are paid at their rate. So that means we can go, and it is the same curriculum that will be taught. So we'll look at that and see, we just have to, it's, it's not in place of summer school, it's, we just keep going, half-day, 30, 30 days. Requires all districts and charters to provide for the use of phonics curriculum that uses systematic direct instruction in K-3. So if we have not been teaching phonics, we will be teaching phonics and that is a good thing.
Cursive writing. Cursive writing is coming back?
It is, it is, and then our English adoption, cursive writing, yes. And now we, we'll have to learn how to teach that because I must say, and nothing against our younger teachers, but our younger teachers have not been taught to write in cursive because it's been gone for such a long time, everyone's printing. So yes, I'm not sure if we'll go back to the big cheap books, but we will have some books that we will try to.
Some big cheap books.
You're too young to remember that. Requires all K3 teachers and principals to go through reading academies in the first, in the next two years. So Region Five will have a lot of reading academies going on because they have to train all teachers in our region in the next two years. Requires districts to prioritize placement of highly effective teachers in K-2. Now, what that means is principals will have to look at their teachers and find out which teachers they feel are highly effective. And if the administration feels that teacher A would do better on another campus to help with the, to bring it up to a higher level, then a teacher can be moved. Now, of course, we understand that's, that's a little difficult if you don't give the teacher anything to do that. So that's something we'll have to work out, just to say, you're doing really, really well, now I need you to go to this low-performance school to help them without giving any incentive will be a bit of a challenge. Requires boards of trustees to develop and post early childhood literacy and mathematics proficiency plans with specific goals for literacy and math. And of course, Region Five will help us. State Board of Education to adopt rules that require all new pre-K teachers to pass a Science of Teaching Reading Exam effective January 1, 2021. So every teacher will have to, and it's not a science test, it's the Science of Teaching Reading Exam. So everyone is expected to teach reading, not just the reading teacher, not just the English teacher, but every teacher, science, social studies, every teacher is expected to teach reading.
What was that called, the teachers used to have to pass that?
That was the TCAT.
TCAT.
That was years ago that there was a test that came forward that every teacher had to pass and so now, and we're hoping that the universities will help us, when a teacher comes to us, that test will have been taken and passed. So we hope. Not much for special ed, increases mainstream special ed weight from 1.1 to 1.15. That just means we have to have more students mainstream. So we have to really look at our principals and ask them to not give too many referrals, not as many referrals, and try to keep students in the regular path. And specifically allows for districts and charters to provide an incentive for teachers who complete training provided by E S C on autism. And autism is, is something that is coming down the pipe. I think there is like one out of every 66 student, children are coming with autism. So we really have to be taught, we have to go through professional development and understand how to teach children with autism. Now, I wanted to say, every child with autism is not going to go into a life skills, life skills unit. There are students that are high functioning autistic and they can do very well in a regular class, but we as educators have to understand how to teach those students and we are willing to do that. Tax changes, now we get into a little bit prohibits, prohibits districts from raising MNO, maintenance and operations tax rates, which is the TRE. Remember, we did our TRE August 5, 2017, so now it's virtually impossible to have a TRE. It requires TREs to be conducted on a uniformed lecture date before you could choose the date you wanted your TRE. Now you have to have it on one of those dates, May or November. You have to have an efficiency audit that is going to be probably impossible to pass and it all, all gears to this, I don't think the legislators really like TREs, so, so they put a stop to it. Reinforces prior lawmaking tax walks. Now, we always, we always thought tax walks were really good, where you could take money from your MNO and put it in your INS, but they said that was illegal. So now they put it in the law where they say it's really illegal now. So it was illegal before, now it's really illegal now. So tax walks are no more and those were, that was a good thing for districts, but not anymore. And then we go into the recalculation of what are copper and golden pennies. You know, we had five, there are eight, now we have the five, so they took two golden and made them copper, vice versa. So that is a little bit hairy talking about copper and golden pennies and Mrs. James may talk about that a little bit. New definition of rural, we are nowhere near rural. Rural, you have to have less than 5,000 students. We have more than five, but if the federal says you're rural, if the federal or the state says you're rural, you're rural now, so the definition is a little bit clearer. Eliminates the CEI and that's something dealing with the foundation program and all that. Amend statutes from previous year to current year property values. Also, we're taking this year's property values which are lower. Transportation funding is now provided at a, as a pre-mile reimbursement rather than a linear density. So that's a good thing. So now transportation will get funding based on the actual miles that they drive, not on a linear basis, but if they take a student from Memorial High to Lamar State College, they get funding for that, no matter where they take students, no matter how, they get funding. So that's, that's a great thing. Increases the cap allowed annually on the NFA for 25 million to 100 million. The small district allotment factor increases for sub 300 square miles. All districts will get at least 3% more funding, so that's every, that's what they're saying. And the commissioner continues to have waiver authority when necessary to support districts with respect requirement to maintain minimum minutes of instruction. Remember, I think we have to have, it's 72,600 minutes. We used to have months and days, but now it's minutes. TEA will be sending information over for the next couple of months, all the way through October. So every month, we will bring something to you that TEA has told us and tried to explain us, so we'll keep abreast of what's going on. And this is something totally different, it's about grades and we're not going to get into that. So I asked Mrs. James to continue on. We're going to go.
Trustees, we had a question before we get moving.
Just a couple, just a couple of things. I had the opportunity because being the designated for the legislative session on that night to attend, to attend that and a couple of things as well, board members and our superintendent, Dr. Porter, they talked about, thank you, they talked about this whole idea of an extra training that is going to be needed and necessary for our police.
Correct.
Talking about that, I'm sure you'll get into that and talk about what's going on as well. Then there was another thing that they talked about as well. I saw something as you were talking about keeping students in school, in classrooms, there's this thing that they're called, that they call restorative justice. We may want to look at that aspect of it as well, prohibit kids from going to ISS as much and that way, of course, you know, keep them in school as opposed to having them suspended, which is ADA related. And finance related as well. Did I have anything else that I wanted to talk about? No, just those, just those couple of, just those couple of things.
And the, and the two of those things that are really.
One more, one more thing. We were able to talk about our issue with the loophole as well and we were able to form, we're talking about, talking with other trustees, forming a coalition to go to our legislators and get that loophole closed that allows refineries to go back and challenge there. So there were other districts there as well that are having that same kind of issue with the industry as well. So that it's getting a lot of attention right now.
Great. So, yes, and that's a good thing, the two things, two things that you said, dealing with our security, that is a hot topic as well as mental health. A lot of issues, a lot of conversations with mental health. We're understanding, we're trying to understand a lot of what the definition of mental health is all about. I think it became a little bit more prevalent after Hurricane Harvey. People were saying that because of the hurricane, we weren't expressing enough, there were some things that were going on in our heads and that was a traumatic experience that I think people are just starting to realize. We are, we are fortunate to have a mental health grant, Mrs. Stady did write that from the metals. So we did a lot this summer, we did get a wonderful email today from the sponsors of that saying how great it has gone, but we still need help, we still need to understand about mental health. Everyone sees that you feel is wrong and they're doing okay, maybe they're not doing okay, but we don't understand how to interact or not interact without saying, approach that subject because for the most part, a lot of people are just intimidated when you say someone has a mental health issue, they go the opposite way or, or try to ignore it or say they're going to get better and sometimes it just don't get better. So that's what we come in, so that's something else that teachers have to learn how to deal with mental health issues for not only their students, but the parents and coworkers as well.
Mrs. James, trustees, I'd ask that you hold on your questions to the end, to the end, Mrs. James with presentation.
I'm going to ask Lofton to help me with my, with the slides. Can you just flip to the first page? Okay. That's not the first page.
He's going to give you a quick.
So I have just a, I have to, I have just a few slides. I wanted to just, I bring this up each time, but want to bring up the point that we have several budget retreats. This is the second one for this fiscal, for the new fiscal year. That's, and then we will, one on August 8. We'll do a lot of talking at that meeting, including discussing the, everything that should, should be ready to go because when we meet on August 22nd, I need you to be prepared to adopt the budget theme. We have a hard rule that it must be adopted before August 31st. So Dr. Porter did a lot of talking about House Bill Three, but, but we, we've looked at several templates and different sources to try to see exactly how much the district would be getting more funds. So this, this, this slide is just trying to show you with the legislative budget board, they're saying that we're going to get somewhere around 75 million and before House Bill Three, they're saying we would have gotten about 70 million. So they, they're saying that we were getting about eight million, about four million increase. Then we use another source and this is the one that we use the most. It's on the, it's our state template and we have a source that provides this. and we have a source that provides this information to us out of Region thirteen. Uh in there, and it provides us an opportunity to put in all the different variables, and it spits out what our revenue is going to be. So in that template, it shows seventy-five million, one twenty-five, one twenty-eight, nine thirty-six. Now, it shows in it that before House Bill Three, we would have received about seventy-two million, nine forty-seven fifteen. If you're saying one of the disparity between what one says and the other, we deal with this on a routine basis, because one may say one thing and one may say another, but we use as our source the, the state funding template. It's been available to us, and that's what we have used year after year. But what we want to point out is, between the Legislative Board uh template and the district state template, it's only about ninety-three thousand dollars difference. It still shows that we will receive similar amounts of money. The, the part here that we want you to understand too is, regardless of what budget projections we use, the, the T E A will true up how much we will receive at the end of the fiscal year. So we will go all year based on what we assume and on our projections, and try to make sure that we're as close as we can to what T E A will be providing to us in funding. That second part of the spreadsheet that shows recapture, one of the good things that happened with House Bill Three is that, if you notice, from the Legislative Budget Board, they said we were going to have nine hundred and twenty-five thousand in the new with House Bill Three. That's all we will owe is nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Before this was implemented, we would have owed thirteen million. So that's a big drop. Now, again, our state template that we are using shows that we will owe one point three million. Again, T E A, this is just our projections based on the state template. But again, the state's T E A will determine what we owe, whether it's the nine hundred and twenty-five thousand or the one point three million. T E A makes the final call on what that is. This is just projections. But again, notice that in the template that we are using, uh before House Bill Three was implemented, we would have owed thirteen million. So this is good news to us, and the difference between one and the other is about three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, the difference between the Legislative Budget Board's assessment of what we would owe for recapture cost versus the state template that we're using. So House Bill, Dr. Porter talked a little bit about House Bill uh Three, the salary increases. So he talked about the thirty percent was the new, of the new revenues that we would receive. So that last columnant shows that eight hundred and eighty thousand, five, four fifty-four. That, that's the dollars that we would need to spend, we're required to spend on teachers, librarians, nurses, and counselors. Uh those numbers that you see to the left of that is a summary of how much is in each category. This came from uh our, from working with our, with T A S B, who's actually working on our salary study, and they provided us with how many teachers we presently have, and how much we're presently uh would, would be subject to that amount. And so they provided this information on how they got to the eight hundred and eighty thousand. It's not the district providing that information. And then, on the other full-time and non-administrators, they've broken it down for us into clerical, paraprofessionals, and auxiliaries. And then uh in that category, the twenty-five percent of the thirty percent, we would be required to pay about two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. So what we wanted to show you here is, we still are working on our budget. We're still working on some of the issues. We're trying to get through how much we have available. We know some of the decreases that we're looking at. We know some of the increases that we would like, but the, the truth is, once we get the tax assessed values around the twenty-second of July, we will have our firm number of what we will have available in our budget to spend. Uh we feel like it's somewhere in the range of what we've, we've calculated so far, and it's about, it's a little over two million dollars, that we would have an increase in our budget. Um I don't wanna tell you, but, but I'm gonna say this. What we've got on the list is not gonna make y'all mad. We will not have adequate dollars to do everything that's listed up there. So that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Trustee Ambrose.
Thank you for the presentation. Go to page five. What you just said, that we will not be able to meet all the increases.
Okay.
Where do you look for us to have to cut?
Well, ac- actually, when we say look, what we're doing is the, but we have a budget committee, and it's made up of the executive team, and it includes uh our, our budget accountant, uh who's in the room tonight, uh Ms. Ms. Barr. It also includes our controller, and it includes our position, uh control specialist, uh in Ms. in Ms. Londo's office. We meet routinely, and we discuss the items. We always ask, what are you gonna cut in order to get what you need? Everyone is giving you things that they wanna add, but when we look at the site where we're going to cut, we always come up short. But we will work on what we will need to cut, and we, when we come to you on, in August, we will have no more on our budget, in, in our budget than it would be balanced. We will not come to you asking for you to tell us what needs to be cut.
Uh if I can piggyback a little bit off of what Mrs. Jeans has said. What we try to do is look at the data and find out where we need to address the money most. Uh Dr. Viner's working on something now. It's a read grant. And we, R E A D, which is a faculty, you know, for grant, and this through Region Five. We understand that we must, must hit our students harder when it comes to reading. So when we look at what, where we wanna spend our money, we have to address the reading needs of our students. So we wanna keep it as close to the classroom as we possibly can, and we also understand the importance of compensation for our employees. So that's another huge conversation. So we try to make, we did, what we do with it, we have all of these wants and needs, wants, I should say. Then we have to prioritize and make sure that we get the biggest thing for our budget. We understand a huge, and sometimes it gets kind of hard because we understand a big need is our maintenance budget. We need to put money into maintenance, because we have all of these new schools, renovated schools, and we have to have money in order to keep those schools up. But we also need things for our students as well.
Trustee Ambrose.
One more question. And finally, Ms. Jean, let's go over to page three, uh with the funding. Was that so much of an increase? Nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, uh twelve million. Does that give you pause? In terms of how they calculate this, and we.
No, ma'am. That was part of what House Bill Three wants to address. Um they, they've heard the citizens and heard the school districts loudly clear that too much of the dollars are, and when I talk about recapture, you may be familiar with the Robin Hood rule, et cetera. So that's what we really are speaking of. So they've heard what the, what the school districts have said. You're taking too much of our money and giving it to someone else where we've got needs in our school district as well. So they've addressed that with their state funding. That's why there's a big decrease.
Trustee, do you have a question? Uh Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Jeans, uh you did address where the funds on page three would be based on, and that's based on our ETA. When they're looking at the, when they're looking at that template, correct?
That, that is correct. Uh the ADA is definitely a factor that's, that plays into how much you receive. That's still part of the state funding template.
Okay, so then I look at four, uh page four, and they're asking for that thirty percent increase. So, um now I'm trying to forget, where's that revenue gonna come out of? Because you sure that is gonna increase, correct?
Not necessarily.
Cause I was worried about that.
Yeah, James, which, now, one thing you said, the thirty percent increase. Understand, it's not an increase.
Not in our funding, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they're gonna give us an increase.
But we're allocated to pay that out.
Correct.
Okay, where's that coming from?
You're asking about the salary increase?
Yes.
They are giving you the salary increase for the, for the new school year. And they're all required, and they, they, they are giving you that as, as far as when you can, I mean, that we, we must, we're required to spend those dollars on co- on the compensation plan. Um there is some things built into the funding um formulas, which indicate that it's gonna be similar to what they did in the past, and that's what Dr. Porter was talking about, is on your um, what, what the state has really done is, I don't know if you remember, several years ago, when they reduced the tax, the tax rate, and then they, and then they, um after so many years, then they said it's on you. I, I speculate, but I don't have any facts on what the, what the strategy's going to be as far as changing the tax rate. But we must pay the employees based on the, the compensation based on the, on House Bill Three. There is no ifs, what about that, that we'll have to pay.
Is there any more questions from the trustee at this time? I thank you, Dr. Porter, and Ms. Jeans, for the staff report. Minutes. Considering if appropriate, approve the minutes of the May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen board meeting. Now, the motion, the motion by Secretary Reed and second by Mrs. Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent agenda. The following items, which are of a routine, routine or recurrent nature, has been designated consent agenda items by the Board President per policy we be local. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee. In which event, the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence. After the items not requested, separate discussion has been acted upon. Trustee, will you be permitted to look through the consent, can you? I'd like to get a motion on, on items one through twenty.
Mr. President, I mean that items one through twenty be accepted as written?
Let's have a motion by trustee Johnson and seconded by trustee Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Person.
Yes, Mr. President. Um we are asking for your approval of the employment of teachers which you have in the rear of your book.
Can I get a motion for the approval of teachers? That's a motion by Ms. Brown, seconded, seconded by Vice President Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, uh before we, before I make the recommendation for the police chief, I do want to say a couple of things. We understand and we know that that is a, a very important role in our district. Uh we would like to thank, we've had several lead people that have worked with us, uh Constable Eddie Collins, Constable Bates, uh and sitting with us, Chief Dur- Durso, who has recently come and has been a huge help. Uh we need to feel safe within our schools. We want our students and our staff members to feel safe. Uh but as educators, we're still learning what that is all about. We understand that there, there are shootings at any given time. We, in our minds, we understand that at any given day, someone could come in and be a shooter, uh a student can be considered a shooter, a parent, anyone. So that is why we need someone to help us to kind of put our arms around this every day we think about it. It's not a, it's not a sometimes, and sometimes we can get complacent as educators because we're teaching children. We're not police officers by no means, and we're not to the point where I feel teachers need to carry guns and all of those things. It's just not where we are. It's just not what we want to do. So that is why it's so important to have a relationship with the Port Arthur Police Department, our constables, our sheriff's department. So that is why it's so important to have the right person, the right person to be able to uh create these relationships and tell us and train us as, as educators as to what we need to do in order to keep our children and staff safe. So as we go through the process, we will ask for your recommendation and improve the employment of the Chief of Police thereof, Mr. Alton James Bates.
Mr. President, I make the motion to approve the employment uh for the Superintendent's recommendation of Mr. Alton Bates as Chief of Police.
Right, a motion by trustee Johnson and seconded by Secretary Reed. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Superintendent, can I ask this?
No.
Uh next, uh approve the employment of elementary science supervisor, Ms. Latonya Bernard.
Can I get a motion?
Mr. President, I'm motion that we are approved in part of elementary science supervisor.
Second.
I second.
Motion been called by Mrs. Brown and seconded by Mrs. Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Dr. Porter.
Next, I'm going to ask for your consideration to approve the employment of secondary ELAR supervisor, Ms. Joyce Johnson.
Mr. President, I make the motion to approve the employment of our secondary ELAR supervisor, Mrs. Joyce Johnson.
Second. Motion been by Mrs. Johnson and seconded by Secretary Reed. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, I will ask for your approval and to uh the approval of employment of Director of the Memorial High School Career and Technical Education Center, Mr. Timothy Tremont.
Second.
Second.
Motion been passed by, uh trustee Ambrose and seconded by Vice President Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Dr. Porter.
Next, please consider and if appropriate, rescind proposed non-renewal of contract employee.
Mr. President, we make the motion to rescind the proposed non-renewal of the contract employee.
Motion been by Mrs. Ambrose and seconded by Mrs. Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Dr. Porter, information, before you give information, Dr. Porter, um I'd like to recognize what our Chief of Police in here at Port Arthur, Texas, Mr. Durso, and also we have a city councilman here as well, Mr. Cal Jones. Dr. Porter.
Let me make the statement, though. I didn't make, uh after the vote, I just wanted to say, Dr. Thank you for the commitment uh to hang uh with uh the, the Police Department for that recommendation. Uh in light of all of the Santa Fe, as you said, you would, all that's happening to, to, to keep our, our kids uh safe. So uh in, in working with that, uh just thank you so much for that.
There's a lot we want to make sure that we have all of, all of everything in place, and we're going to rely heavily on Chief Durso to help us with all of those things, and uh even uh Sheriff Xena Stevens, who was with us as well. So we, we want everyone's help. And as I said, it's a collaboration. It's not, uh we can't do it by ourselves. So we need everyone in the community.
What we were working about, as we were working on, and talked about, you know, it's important, and it's very difficult, because we talked about prison pipeline, and this is one.
And this is one of the things that we, that you brought to us, is to help to curtail that prison pipeline where our children don't go from, uh, school and assist. So thank you for that, Mr. Jones.
Great. Uh, in, uh, information, enroll, average dating enrollment, eight thousand three hundred fifty-two. Average dating attendance for the month of May, ninety-one point ninety-six percent.
Thank you, Dr. Porter, for the information. And with German, a motion?
Second.
Moved by trustee Brown, seconded by Secretary Reed. Meetings adjourned at seven forty-eight. Thank you.